I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Harrison for his comments.
Good evening. Each year, we have the responsibility of revisiting our code of conduct. And last year, we had significant revisions to our code of conduct because of the integration of the Dignity for All Students Act, which is the anti-bullying law. This year, modifications are minor and only reflect a few language changes. The board has been provided with redlined copies of the code. We have copies posted online for the public to review. There's also copies in the back of the room for everyone. But generally speaking, we're looking at that we have not changed the spirit or the intent of the code. There's a few modifications that comply with shifts in DASSA as well as some clarifying language. I'll just quickly talk through each of these areas. On page two, there's a shift. There's a language shift here to make everyone aware of rights related to freedom of expression and identifying that all rights aren't absolute if they violate the code of conduct. On page three, there's a few edits for clarification purposes only. You can see just a few language adjustments. On page five, there's an expansion of the definition of harassment, which is directed by the Dignity for All Students Act. That is not liberties that we've taken. It is complying shifts in the definition to our code of conduct.
And just so, Chris, people understand who is making these changes. These are changes to address changes in the law that our council has made to the code of conduct to suggest that the board...
These are legislative changes. As the laws have evolved, our council reviews our respective policies and, of course, in this case, the code of conduct. And in their review, not only independently but with our district staff, make recommendations for such changes that are highlighted this evening. On pages seven and eight, there is a requirement to identify the reporting of incidents and identifying chains of command. On 1112, there's also references to the changes in the harassment definition and that the bullying definition includes harassment, where it hadn't included as directly in the past. Page 14, again, a couple shifts with language as it pertains to DASSA. In 24 to 26, there are some adjustments here that references the discipline of students with disabilities. The added language expands on 504 regulations, which are required to be in here, which are slightly different than that from IDEA. And the previous language had leaned more towards the specifics associated with classified students that were covered under IDEA, and it needed to be a little more specific to reference 504. So the, these shifts and revisions are available for public comment and feedback for the next 30 days. As I said, it's posted...
As well as the board's...
Yes, of course. So we welcome feedback and your thinking on that as well as any commentary from the public. The documents can be found on the website, and after 30 days expires, we will consider any of those alterations. And if any are necessary, we will communicate them to the board and the public. And from that point, we will then ask the board to adopt it in the August meeting.
And I know that we have received some clarifying comments from very diligent members of the public so far. And does the board want to address anything with respect to these two tonight or just ask questions in the normal course and suggest language?
I don't understand. We have 30 days, but what are you saying? Do we have comments now?
Well, yeah, just that we have comments now. I mean, I know we had the, I guess we had the draft policies a couple days ago. They were really just going forward to the changes in law. It's really just by law, we have to have a public hearing to advise the public that we're making changes to these two things. And if anybody has any comments, we just have 30 days. I guess, I guess the plan would be to adopt it at the next meeting in August.
I have, I guess, one question. What the subs, a lot of the changes, by the way, I read through the code of conduct just because I never had before, so I thought I should do it. Only once, probably. It's a long document and repetitive in some areas, just because there are similar things that have to be said. I have, I have a few sort of minor textual things I noticed, like spelling and punctuation that need to be...
Sure.
The ones, and most of it has to do with this new law. If I'm, if I'm...
The actual law, the Dignity for All Students Act, or DASSA, if you prefer to it as, wanting to, originally wanting to affect September 2012, but there had been already revisions to it that the legislature approved as we were actually heading into last year. But those revisions actually go in effect for September 13th. So those are reference changes. And it pertains to, again, the definition of harassment, redefined the inclusion of harassment in the broader scope of bullying. And then council identified the recommended language pertaining to students with 504 and their rights in relation to discipline.
And the motivation for the change and having to do with freedom of speech, and there was one other where the qualifying language was inserted, is that where there's, was there a specific issue there or is it simply lawyerly dotting of the i's?
No, exactly the latter, recommendation from council that they were, in their review of all their clients' codes of conduct, they made similar recommendations. Nothing specific to Irvington.
Okay, anyone else?
I have a minor comment on the safety plan, where you have a list of names and the office numbers.
Actually, we haven't gotten to that.
Oh, I thought you were talking about that.
No, we just finished code of conduct.
Sorry.
No, and so...
Okay, I would like to add a few comments and questions. On page seven, under, no, back up, I'm sorry. On page six through eight, it defines different roles, the expectations of board members, parents and various, and faculty administration. Under the board and parents, it refer, makes references to that you should conduct yourself, you know, professionally and respectfully. I kind of feel like similar language should be inserted for staff members because I think the expectations should be the same for everyone in terms of how they conduct themselves and what's expected. So I kind of feel like it should be uniform through those sections. It goes from page six to eight.
So the, the reference is the deportment essentially?
Excuse me?
So the reference is to professional conduct?
Right, exactly. Kind of similar to, you know, what it says for the parents and for the school board members. Because it just struck me that it specified it for the, for those two, but not for the And my other question, on page seven, it says that the superintendent is to report the incidents, but I think it was kind of not clear as to who the superintendent is reporting these incidents to. Is it the state, the board?
We, as superintendent...
Does that vary?
We, no, we have, well, if there were significant incidents that would result in higher level of discipline, that would come to the board's attention, certainly that would be reported to you. But with respect to acts of bullying or violations of DASSA, there's a reporting mechanism within the state, V A D I R, and they have a particular, and it's an acronym. I'm trying to remember what it is, V A D I R. I can't remember. But the...
It's a verification of something.
Yeah. But the, there's a whole portal there where we, that's where the responsibility is for me to make this report.
So do you think it should be specified or leave it kind of up in the air? Because it doesn't specify, it just says that you have to report.
I think it should be specified.
Right.
So we're looking at...
I believe it's on pa, it's on page seven, the last bullet point.
I got it.
And the DASSA officer can change from year to year, correct?
Correct, and that's identified in the reorganization agenda.
Right.
Can it change during the year?
If, if there was need, we certainly could be, certainly you want to have someone that's been trained and educated in the law and is connected with, you know, certainly our policies and the activities in our schools. But if, if we saw the need, we could certainly make that shift.
So my comments for that, yep.
Each year, we also hold the responsibility of reviewing and updating our district emergency plans. This year, we went to, through an extensive effort and partnered with a consulting firm that reviewed our existing plans and provided guidance in the development of our new plans. Certainly, we're committed to providing a safe learning environment for all of our students and, of course, a safe place for our staff members to work. And with that in mind, we have some quality plans that have been developed. In accordance with law, we present and discuss a district-wide plan, which is an overview. The public and board should be aware that we have very specific building level plans that are protected under confidentiality rights and are not heard in a public forum or shared with the public. But our staff is regularly trained and drilled in these protocols. Before I turn it over to Ms. Miller, I do want to comment that we've taken great length in the district to make our building safer, more secure, and to increase the readiness of our students and staff to respond in any critical situation. And in doing so, we far exceed the minimum requirements of the state of New York for drilling for emergency situations. Of course, the state requires numerous fire drills, which in many ways operate as the base line for other emergency activity. But the state only requires one lockdown drill and one evacuation drill. We're in the process now of developing plans where we will be drilling every single month. This year, I think we performed five emergency drills in each of our schools, which included a variety of situations.
One month you're doing them? So you're going to do 10 of them?
That is our intent at this point, to prepare for a variety of different scenarios. And as I think Mr. Lichtenwalner can attest to, having facilitated it in this building, that when you look at the initial implementation of drills, you can say that a drill takes an extensive amount of time, but once we've practiced them, they take a matter of minutes. So there's, there's limited impact on the loss of instructional time. But I think the rewards are far worth that time in making sure that our staff and students are well-prepared to respond in a variety of environmental or physical threats that could be present in our school community.
Is the thinking that over time, you may change that schedule as people achieve a level of readiness?
I, I think, well, we look at the best practice that comes and recommendations that grow out of the security industry, they certainly recommend far more than the two drills per year. But realistically, there's a variety of scenarios to drill for and different conditions to drill for. So to simply assume that we would be prepared in any situation to only lock down or to evacuate, there's many in between. We have to think about the extraordinary weather that we've experienced. And if a hurricane or a significant windstorm approaches our area, we would want to be able to train our staff and students to be able to shelter in place, where they move to interior space of the building away from windows so they could not be hit by flying objects or shards, shards of glass. We may have low-level concerns where you would just lock down the perimeter of the building and not let guests in, that would count as a drill, but we wouldn't disrupt the learning process in the school. So to consider that if we were to have a number of eight, 10 different drills throughout the course of the year, not all of them would impact student learning. We would go into different levels of security modes around the building, and learning and student movement would continue in the building. But administratively, we would change protocols in managing the security of the building.
How many of the drills do you estimate would impact student learning out of the 10?
I believe, first of all, I think each of them is a learning experience for our children.
He's quoting you and saying that some of them are only going to be administrative.
Yeah, I think when we look at initial rounds of drills, any, certainly an evacuation drill consumes time because we're literally moving the students from a particular school campus. But when we're looking at the first lockdown of the year, it may take a little bit longer because we have new students and new classrooms, and we have to identify the appropriate protocols for those individual spaces. And when we have an initial shelter-in-place drill, it may take a little bit more time. But once we replicate those drills, then it'll only take a few minutes. I, I think it would be safe to assume that we probably only have a three, four drills potentially throughout the course of the year that would last more than 10 to 15 minutes.
I just kind of along the lines of what Phil was saying. I mean, I think clearly, safety comes first, but I think at some point, you're going to reach a point of diminishing returns. You know, I live in LA, and those kids practice earthquake drills, but you know, at some point, you know, they understand what has to be done, and you can't, you also can't practice for every possible eventuality. So I just concerned about, not only does it take them time out of the class, but, you know, kids take time to settle down then. And so even though the drill itself might take 15 minutes, you might lose a half an hour of learning time that day. So I just, you know, would like to just put out there that if it seems that, you know, people are comfortable with it, you know, there might be a point at which we could start reducing the number of drills. It's a drill, it's not possible to plan for every eventuality.
Your, certain, your point is well-received, and we'll, you know, we're, as we go through our training and our drills throughout the course of the year, we'll, we'll certainly contemplate whether or not we need to replicate certain drills. Again...
Preparing for a hurricane or tornado, for example. Hurricanes, we generally receive ample warning for. Tornadoes, you don't, but it's, we've only been hit by one tornado in the last 10 years in the Westchester area, which went through Canico Hills, and that was a serious tornado, and that was the first time we've been hit by an F-3 ever. So preparing for tornado is a little like preparing for a lightning strike, so I'm not sure that...
But I hate to take learning lessons from looking at the Newtown situation. And they, they, you know, all of the experts that reviewed that case talked about the emergency protocols that were in place and the habits that were developed in that school community that preserved countless lives. So when we look at those situations, we never know what we're going to see. We never know what's going to happen. I can tell you that in my last district, there was a tornado that touched down, while not an F-3, but a tornado that touched down, and we had to move to a shelter-in-place drill and never imagined that would happen in, in North Jersey.
And just, just to note another thing, we had multiple situations this year, which seemed odd, you know, that went to the full lockdown mode, I think, in these situations. There were, you know, there were situations where we had, you know, staff who had been here for a long time, I think, would have known the procedures and everything right now, but, you know, at the end of the day, didn't perform exactly how they were supposed to. So, you know, I get, you know, kids getting out, kids, you know, maybe get back to class, but I think in situations like that, you find that, you know, there's never enough practice to be sure everybody's... Because it's not only the kids, right? It's getting the benefit of the drill. It's also the teachers, the admins doing what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, but I think last year, we were in a situation where, you know, at least according to my kids, they had no drills until that situation arose in Connecticut. So in terms of the teachers not being prepared, I, you know, I'm just saying, I think there's some optimal number. You need to plan for something, but you, you know, I, I think we're running the risk of not only taking too much time out of the classroom, but I'm concerned that we're running the risk that the kids are going to start to expect that everything's a drill. I mean, if you do it very often, then if the real thing comes around, nobody's going to take it seriously. We're worried about the little kids thinking one a month is a lot for them. So I just, you know, use your best judgment, but I, I really think, as Phil said, maybe over time, as people get more adapted, used to this, then we can kind of tail it down a little bit.
We will certainly always evaluate our practices, and I can say that the day that we had the lockdown here on the campus, the students and staff sensed that it was a real situation. We've not announced that it was a drill. We specifically said that this is a lockdown. And it was, I believe that, that it was taken very seriously and certainly a learning experience for all of us. But your points are, are well-taken, and we will reflect on that.
Actually, in the high school, it's interesting because the texts were flying probably at them. Is this a drill or is this real? At first, the kids didn't take it seriously.
Well, it depends on who you...
Yeah, exactly. Definitely the text thing, either real or not real, what you do.
Depends on who was where, exactly. I think for the most part, a lot of them did take them seriously, including my two girls who were locked in the rap room, took it seriously. They were together, but, um, yeah, and parents calling, is this real? I got a text from my daughter, is this real? They think it's real. I think a lot of them did take it seriously.
So with that said, Ms. Miller, would you want to highlight some of the...
Okay. Well, the district-wide safety plan is basically an overview of the district-level requirements, and it's provided to you and to the public to ensure that we are in compliance with New York State regulations. It gives an overview of different requirements, such as the chain of command, the required district resources, some of the prevention and intervention strategies, as well as district contact information. And it also shares with the public the members of the district-wide safety team. As you will see on the front page, the Project SAVE clearly defines the steps that school districts have to take to ensure compliance with that law. We have to appoint the district-wide safety team on an annual basis, review the safety plan on an annual basis. In July of every year, the board has to appoint the coordinator. In September, every year, the board has to approve the members of the safety team. And also in September, every year, the management coordinator has to share a copy of the district safety plan and the emergency handbook with all staff members. There's also specific criteria for each building principal to follow, setting up the respective teams. And those building-level plans, as Dr. Harrison elaborated, are not for public distribution but for staff distribution. Any questions?
Is it fair to say that this is, just for the public's education, that this is sort of a, with the consultants, is sort of a best practices, kind of a global level that's being used by multiple districts, and then when, you know, the real meat of it is what we're doing in the individual schools?
In each respective school, yes. All school districts in the state of New York have to follow the same Project SAVE legislation.
And I might, might add that CLPS, the group that worked with us on this, are really recognized as experts in the field. If you recall, going back a few months ago, Westchester County hosted a series of school safety symposiums, and the two partners that managed our plan development were keynote speakers at those events, so certainly well-respected within, in their field.
Anyone else?
Just one last question.
Yeah.
So in the actual plan, we have the list of the district-wide telephone numbers. I'm assuming that all of those people have everyone's cell numbers, too, so that in the case of emergency, they all can get ahold of everybody? That's just for the purpose of this?
Yes.
So each of these documents are available for public and board comment for the next 30 days, and we welcome and encourage any feedback that you may have.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call our regular meeting to order, and if we can say it's a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in visible liberty and justice for all.
So at this point, I would like to welcome Mr. Greidos to a second term and ask him to take the pledge. He'd have to me. I, Robert Greidos...
I, Robert Greidos...
...do solemnly swear...
...do solemnly swear...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the State of New York...
...and the Constitution of the State of New York...
...and that I will fully discharge the duties of...
...and that I will fully discharge the duties of...
...trustee of the Irvington Board of Education...
...trustee of the Irvington Board of Education...
...according to the best of my ability...
...according to the best of my ability.
Welcome back.
Yee-haw.
Seems like we just did this a long ago.
That's right. Welcome for another two weeks.
We're going to do this every...
We're going to do this every...
Every two weeks, we have to redo John.
Okay.
That's what I call it. There you go.
Okay, sure. Add in there.
I, name, oh. I...
Just a couple weeks ago.
I, John Montgomery, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Irvington Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Good. Again. Signature?
I guess before I get a motion to accept the agenda...
I'm sorry, it's still late.
Oh, it's still late to me.
It's still my meeting, yeah.
Yeah, we technically don't have a president, right?
That's right.
Who's that guy anyway?
Very good, thank you. So at this time...
Motion.
I will, okay. May I have a motion to accept the agenda? So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes 5-0. Okay, now, I will ask for nominations for the president of the Board of Education for the 2013-14 school year.
I would like to nominate Robert Greidos as president of the Irvington School Board.
I second that. No, do I have any other nominations? Oh, sorry. May I have a second on Mr. Greidos's nomination? I second that. All in favor of Mr. Greidos as president of the Board of Education?
Aye.
Aye.
5-0, congratulations, Mr. Greidos. And now I can turn it back over to you.
Now it's mine again?
It's yours, Ed.
It's insecure there.
You've got to behave yourself.
It sounds like I'm some homie. You've got all my jokes for another year. At this point...
Do you want to send my nomination?
Yeah, definitely, that's right.
Okay, you do have to take the oath one more time.
Okay.
All of these procedures, getting to your back.
I, Robert Greidos, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will fully, faithfully discharge the duties of president of the Irvington Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Very good. Okay, now we can look here with you.
Congratulations. Thank you, thank you. At this point, I'd like to call, and I will make a nomination for vice president of the Board of Education, and I would like to nominate Robin Kerner for vice president. Are there more nominations? Are there any other nominations? Can I get a second?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
5-0.
Are you swearing?
Are you in?
What do you accept?
You shouldn't have a choice.
I, Robin Kerner, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties as a vice president of the Irvington Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I guess before we move on, and I know that the public is, the numbers here tonight are staggering, so when I give you, hopefully people will watch this as I compliment you, but I have, you know, Phil has done a, will continue to do... But I have, you know, Phil has done a, will continue to do a wonderful job as board member, but has done a wonderful job as an officer of this board in so many ways. And thank you for your work and on the board and for your continued friendship.
Where's my plaque?
After your third term, after your third term. She gets a plaque, she's in her third term.
Can I have a library named after me, please?
I guess, at this point, the line of authority within the board, you have that?
Yes.
We don't need to do anything there. Article six, the Board of Education...
Come on, shuffle, shuffle.
Oh.
They should switch.
We can say that after this meeting.
You know, one of the best things about this change is I get to sit next to you for a year, so please switch.
She's got too much stuff.
She's a bad lady.
Lou's never gonna watch this anyway.
She has like extra shoes under there, too.
We're going to table six point one and six point two, as we typically do. By email today, I've asked the board for their desires to populate the committees and the various liaisons on appointment, so we'll report back and give our slate and ask.
If, I may ask a question? We do have a number of policies that I think are important for us to review and that we need to hold them with, have public hearings, and some that I think are critical that we have in place for September. So if there's interest in either appointing, identifying members that are interested in policy at this point in time, or at least interim acting members that would be able to serve in that capacity.
Who is that right now?
You and me.
It's, do, or...
We're both on it.
Okay, we just haven't had a meeting, that's why. I think I was on it, I didn't know. I guess now I remember that you were on it. If the board is fine, I'm happy for Mrs. Kashkina to attend whatever meeting and report back to the board pending our collective determination of how we're going to divvy up, is that fine?
Yeah.
So we will reach out to schedule a meeting for the near future.
Okay, and the other thing, what about buildings and grounds? Traditionally, over the summer, don't we go walk through and have a meeting, or do you not think it's necessary? Or we can wait till August?
We can wait till August.
Okay.
When is the next board meeting, then?
Next scheduled board meeting is in August seventh or twenty-one.
There it is.
Of August, so it's almost two months, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess like I said, in a month, I guess it's two months.
It's, yes.
I mean, if you have a, I mean, couldn't we start with something and then if that needs to change when the official appointment comes in August, we could just change up the people? So if we need to have the meeting, we just have two people at the board go to the meeting? Or who we think is gonna do it, and then for whatever reason that's gonna change, we could change at the end of August?
Oh, of course.
Yeah, so I wouldn't hold up a meeting, just have a committee appointment? Yeah.
They're not official appointments, actually, you just decide, and then we just report out, so.
Right.
All right, and I mean, since you were out last year, I make some for you. Certainly, the meeting continue, and then I guess if anyone else is interested.
John, I know you'd mentioned buildings and grounds. No, it was Phil.
It was me.
It was Phil, so maybe...
Yeah.
Since I'm sitting next to Maria, I thought I might as well do buildings and grounds.
Okay, yeah, neither of those.
Okay, I guess then we'll move to seven point one. Which is the appointment of Elaine Cardia as our district clerk. Do we have to do this by motion? Can I get a motion to approve Elaine Cardia as our district clerk?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Congratulations. It was a close...
Now she can pick up her pen.
I, Elaine Cardia, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk of the Irvington Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Pleasure having you back. I guess at this point... Before we go to the other appointments, if I could ask the board to authorize an amendment of the agenda to pull up? Yeah, well, first of all, I'd like to table fifteen point two until the next meeting, pending discussion in executive session about a possible appointment.
Sorry, I...
The appointment in special education. Right, right. And then I'd like to move up fifteen point one and fifteen point three because these fine individuals are with us tonight, and there are some people that want to say some words about them. So I guess the motion would be to table fifteen point two until the next meeting, and move up fifteen point one and fifteen point three to the current place in the agenda, which is after seven point one.
Can I move?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry, John, you made the motion?
Yes. I did.
And Phil seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Now I'll turn it over now to Dr. Harrison for items fifteen point one and fifteen point two on our agenda.
Very good, thank you. Each year, or anytime that we have a vacancy, there's always anxious moments in our school district, in our schools, and to make sure that we find excellent teachers to lead the education for our children. And I think tonight, we have found two outstanding individuals that bring with them a great wealth of experience and passion that are gonna lead the education for our children, and one in Dowslane and the other in the high school. So I would like to ask Mr. Lichtenwalner to stand up and say a few words on Crystal's behalf and introduce her to the board and public.
Certainly, it's my pleasure. Good evening, I'm here tonight with Crystal Moradya, who has been selected through a very long, arduous process to join our staff at Dowslane. You know, we had over two hundred people apply for the position. And the interview committee was impressed with Crystal's content knowledge of the elementary school, her experience with integrating technology into the classroom, and the knowledge of students with disabilities. When she came to give her demo lesson, we were especially impressed with the level of planning that went into the lesson and her very quick ability to connect with students. So that, those are the types of things that we're really looking for, and so we were very, very impressed with her ability to do that. So tonight, I'm pleased to introduce you to her and recommend her to the Irvington School.
Great, and I'd like to ask Dr. Core if she could introduce Lauren, who will be joining our forces here at the high school.
So my pleasure, so hi Lauren, welcome. So Lauren is a little bit of a different process for Lauren, so she interviewed the same week, but as you probably know, at the high school, there really aren't that many students left the week that Lauren interviewed. So Deb Marinella did an amazing job of leading a committee of the other special ed teachers from the high school, and they interviewed about, I wanna say, eight or nine different people, and surfaced three candidates that they brought back for demo lessons. And we recruited students, so Lauren really got to provide instruction to a group of kids that were kids who were willing to come, we gave them pizza, to be honest with you, because the last week in the high school, there just aren't that many kids available. So as if it's not challenging enough to do a demo lesson, to do a demo lesson to a group of students that aren't really a class of students was even more challenging. And after sitting through three demonstration lessons, Lauren just did an amazing job. She engaged our high school students in a way, she had them writing and doing, and they were actually responding and paying attention, and she had created a nice lesson. And we saw that her interaction with students, there was no question that she's gonna be a good match for us here in Irvington. So we welcome you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Well, I guess we could make it official. Can I get a motion to accept items fifteen point one and fifteen point three?
Can I?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, this is just a technicality, it just struck me before when I was rereading the agenda. Shouldn't it say we're appointing them to an elementary level and a secondary level? In case you need to make some staff, or no, it's not necessary?
It's based on their certification.
So the flexibility is there, it doesn't matter?
The flexibility is there, although I, if I'm looking at Lauren and Crystal, their certifications are probably far more specific, so some of our more experienced or veteran special educators have a K-12 certification. The New York State has shifted that, and the certifications are much more specific. So it's your certification, it's not the tenurary in this case.
So it doesn't matter how it's written in the resolution?
No. So we can review that, but it wouldn't make a difference based on what you're saying?
So even though we're granting tenure for Dowslane?
It's not Dow... It's, no, okay, so let me be, oh, I'm sorry, no, the clarification would be, Crystal could in fact be any, placed in any classroom based on her certification. So she's being appointed to Dowslane, but she's in elementary or K...
Pre-K to grade six.
Pre-K to grade six.
So it doesn't matter how it's written in the resolution, we have the flexibility?
Yeah, let me, okay, let me, no, but let me, now you're making me nervous. Let me read what you mean.
What says at Dowslane, N M M Elementary, in the special education tenure area.
Right, it's the tenurary that says, okay, absolutely.
Okay.
So, no, that's what I thought, I had read it, that's why I was a little surprised.
With administrators, then? Because you know, with administrators, we need to specify, like, is it secondary or...
Not, the building never makes it, in other words, where, if you name the building, that has nothing to do with it. It's the tenure area, so if we tenure an administrator as a secondary principal, then they would be able to be a secondary principal. If we tenure them as the middle school principal, for instance, so it's what you tenure them in.
It doesn't say on here what the tenure area is, that's what you're saying.
Oh, no.
It does, special education tenure area.
Okay.
Okay, it doesn't, okay.
So, and it's based on their certification, so we could, okay. Thank you, sorry for...
Well, now, now, I'm sorry, I didn't have any questions, but now I've managed to get...
Sorry.
I'm trying to do this to the best of my abilities, which are limited. I don't, now I'm totally confused, what? Because I don't understand any of this, and so maybe if anybody happens to watch this, they won't either. The special education tenure area, what does that mean?
So...
This is nothing having to do with these...
No, it says nothing to do with it.
But it's just a question that's coming out.
So there are two paths that we need, that you need to think about when we hire a teacher. So one is their certification, and that's first and foremost. So a teacher has to be certified to work at whatever level or core, or course, if you're at the secondary level.
And is that certi, that's a particular set of grades?
That's New York State certification, so they complete a program, and these days, you take a test.
So Crystal said she was certified pre-K through six, I think, right?
Right, so if Crystal, if Crystal decided in a year that she didn't like us, which could never happen, Lauren could not step into Crystal's position, because Lauren does not, unless she happens to hold the elementary certification at special ed. But that's first and foremost. Now, we are responsible each year to report that our teachers are all highly qualified, and in being highly qualified, it means that you hold the correct New York State certification. Now, you can hold multiple New York State certifications. What, where, so Crystal may hold elementary...
Exactly, the general S, so that means I can't really cross over to say be a general S teacher, I have to get re-tendered.
So, so just to clarify, so a teacher can hold multiple certifications based on program and based on taking the exam. As a school district, we appoint the person to the tenure area that we're hiring them, so we're not hiring Crystal as a general education teacher. So therefore, Crystal, Crystal? Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, okay, I got it.
And they also did? So can I get a motion to accept items fifteen point one and fifteen point three on the agenda?
So.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero, congratulations. But Crystal may not leave any year, but she may never come to a board meeting.
No comment.
Thank you for, for sitting through that. So I guess at this point, we're back to eight point, I'm sorry, seven point two. Seven point two. Can, now, at this, I forget, did we do, do we do these individually, or do we do these as part of a consent agenda?
This is one you do individually.
Okay, you let me know when we get to the...
The next.
Okay, can I get a motion to accept seven point two?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Moving on to eight point one, the approval of the annual resolutions. Can I get a motion to approve eight point one?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five one.
Five one.
I'm sorry?
You said five one.
Five one, did I say five one?
Good, yeah.
Yes.
The ghost of Jim McCann is still with us. Jim, if you're watching, which I know you're not. Hello.
He would be watching, he had cable access.
From Florida.
He and Lou are sitting there, we're watching.
You can send him the YouTube link.
Exactly right. Okay, section now to nine point one, the other appointments. Can I get a motion to accept nine point one?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Jim abstained on that one. I guess, item ten, do we take that as a...
No, now you're taking consent.
Eight point one was consent.
Eight point one was consent, so we approved nine point one. So now, can I get a motion to approve item ten, eleven, twelve, which is...
They're all part of the consent.
Oh, they're all part of the consent agenda?
So unless you want pulled out.
Okay, I'm sorry, then I should ask, is there any items other than the items heretofore pulled out that any board member would like to discuss individually before we speak to the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yes?
Fifteen point one seven.
Okay, fifteen point one seven?
It's a different consent.
Eleven point two. I don't think you're looking at it on the agenda, this is the one I printed out.
Okay, I do have a new one.
Yeah.
No, she's, she's right.
The guidance council, the substitute teacher salaries, which is eleven point two on the original agenda. And then I just had a quick question on fifteen point one four.
Fifteen point one four, okay. So eleven to...
You don't have to pull them out if you just have questions.
Okay. Then why don't we, why don't we go with your, with your questions? Or your points?
Yeah, 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 that's fine. On, okay, so now it's on order, on eleven point two. This is just substitute teaching salaries, something that's come up year after year after year. And I know historically, we've been low, and...
Low meaning we don't pay as much?
Our salary was lower than the, kind of the River Towns, our comparable districts. And I know in the past, I don't know if that was passed there, but we've had a problem attracting quality subs. So I just kind of wanted to ask questions publicly, you know, how do we stand now? And how does the automated calling system help? And are we okay on our salary structure, or do you guys think we need to revisit that?
One of you, and then I can add on to admit some pieces.
In response to that, I don't know if you received it, but we pulled up the analysis of all of the school, the local schools.
Oh, okay.
Okay, for substitute teachers. We did that today.
Oh, okay.
And the other school districts are, a lot of them are exactly the same as we are. And the other school districts are, a lot of them are exactly the same as we are, still ninety or more, you know, around that, ninety, ninety-five. Hastings, Dobbs Ferry, the ones that we think of comparable. And so I don't think.
I just want to be clear, not Oarsley, quite more, so just.
But I don't think we're that far out of range, because since we've had AESOP, we've had a good pool of candidates for subs, and the number of, what do you call, extra periods that we're paying for our teachers when we did not have substitute teachers has diminished significantly. So we are saving a lot of money using the subs, so we're having a good relationship with AESOP.
Okay.
Great, so that was in on eleven point two?
Excuse me?
That was in on eleven point two?
I have a follow-up question to eleven point two. Do we, do we have a rule or a maximum amount of days someone can work if they're not certified as a teacher? Or can anyone sub theoretically all year round, if you're not certified as a teacher?
No, if you're not certified, you can't sub more than forty days.
Is it forty?
Okay, and do we have a different pay scale for someone who does have a teaching certification versus someone who doesn't, or is it equal?
Ours is equal, but you can just sub more days. You continue to sub.
Okay, and is that what the difference is with other districts? Do they have, is it similar?
Well, you'll see from the chart that Bev sent, you'll see it's, it's, it's all, in both places, some places it goes up, some places it stays the same.
We were sent this chart today?
No, no, no. It will be sent to you, Bev pulled it today.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay. I thought I was missing something, okay.
No, but it'll be sent to you first thing in the morning.
So you'll see, there's, you know, you'll see, it goes both ways, different districts. Some districts pay more based on number of days, and some districts, I would say more districts stay the same, is what I noticed from the chart.
But I guess the more, the more part of your question, which was the, your second part of your question was, have we, have we seen, have we found it hard to find substitutes and to find good substitutes because of the payment?
It's always hard to find substitutes, but what Bev said is absolutely true. The increase in, in the number of subs that we have available to us now who have taken the positions, it far exceeds.
It's so great.
It's huge, and it's a big money, it's a huge money savings for us.
Good. Fifteen point one seven?
Fifteen point four.
Four.
Sorry.
I, I just, there's a lot of summer work, and I just was wondering if there's someplace from a budget perspective that we could just see totals, like, is there any way to break out, like, how much money do we spend on summer work for teachers in general? Is there, I, I just would be curious, at some point, it's kind of last night.
Fifteen four is not.
Fifteen point four.
Maybe it used to be. One four, one four.
Fifteen four.
Sorry.
Gently.
So, I'm sorry, Robin, what were you?
So I was just saying, at some point, I would be curious to see from a numbers perspective, how much we spend as a district on summer work, and if there's a way to maybe, so then it just, like, maybe how much we spend for ELA or something. I just, at some point, it would be interesting to see, especially as we budget moving forward.
Yeah, I'm gonna, you'll have a report at the end of the summer?
Okay.
So that you'll see exactly what we spent?
Okay, great.
And you'll know mostly who worked, because you approved them, but you'll know the number of days they ended up working, as well as the work that got completed by subject area, as well as some of the other things that fit under the summer work category that I think are not as easily defined as ELA, so individual.
And just so, so the public understands.
Time it.
Mr. Dawson knows, just like the back of his hand. This was a question, a follow-on question to a question you had on the agenda and what we approved in the last meeting, whereby we approved certain individuals to be eligible for summer work, but it still wasn't set as to how much work and who would perform. But in accordance with law, we had to at least appoint the individuals to do that. So really, this is closing the loop as to how much work is going to be done, by whom, how much it's going to cost us, and we'll see that at the end of the summer.
Is there a specific budget line that covers this work?
Yes.
Yeah, we budgeted summer curriculum work.
Okay, so that, some guide, I guess, right?
Yes, it definitely guides it, keeping in mind that when we do budget, it's, you know, begins in, in November and December. So it's not always, so it's a guide.
Right.
But I wouldn't, you know, it's not an exact.
It begins in November and December, but it doesn't get set until.
But the number, it, but the number is fairly set, like, you know, in other words, we're not changing that number, saying, oops, you know, turns out this happened, and now let's change it. So it's, it's a guide.
Yeah, it might be nice to just, it's broader than maybe the summer, but this is part of overall, an overall expense for curriculum changes and development, right? Because that's a lot of what the summer work, at least this year, is about, adopting, kind of moving toward Common Core in particular. I don't know about the current item, but that was true for the items two weeks ago.
Yes.
It might be nice to have some sense of what generally are outlays on that. As you work, as we get a report on how much, what the expenditures were for the summer, a sense of how much generally we're spending on curriculum development and change, which is involved, presumably involves work during the year as well.
And I guess the question, wouldn't that be a little bit so of an anomaly because of the A P P on Common Core, more Common Core, as opposed to the case of the general curriculum, or you think it's all the same?
I, I think the word curriculum is just one piece, so when we talk about the budget, it's really curriculum, instruction, assessment. So it, it's multi-layered, and so I'm reluctant to just call it, I'm nodding, but I'm a little reluctant to say the money is just spent on curriculum, the professional learning, and as well as our assessment costs.
Right, well, I guess, to my mind, curriculum and instruction are somewhat distinct from assessment.
Part and parcel, I think there is.
Assessment is how are you, are you doing what you set out to do with curriculum and instruction?
No, but we have a budget, we pay for, there are costs associated with the New York State assessment, we pay to have those assessments scored, that would also be out of the curriculum office budget. So we, there are, there are costs associated for all New York State assessments, as well as some of the other assessments we administer.
Oh, I understand, yeah, okay, well, anyway, we can deal with this as we go, I think.
And you had fifteen point seventeen?
Yeah.
Just, just so we're looking, it's the revision of the hire date?
Yeah, it's the guidance hire, I guess, you know, I had asked before the meeting to understand when, what kind of summer work guidance council is anticipating, because I know they do a few days here and there, and it does seem like, from, you know, what, what you guys had responded, but it seemed like most of the work would be the week before school started for this guidance.
All guidance, the, all chair people, chair persons work in the summer, so we're hiring him, we're, we're, the hiring date is twofold. One is all guidance counselors, both middle school and high school, return to work five days prior to teachers returning.
Okay.
So that he needs to be, have been appointed in time to do that.
Right.
But more importantly, we're hiring him as a chair, so he needs to be here and be working with the other chair people.
Does he work all summer?
They work, they work a set number of days.
I think it's ten?
So, well, the chair people normally work ten. Because guidance already works those days, he does not work ten separate days, but this summer, for instance, I mean, we already need him to be working and getting acclimated and set, so he'll work at least, at least two or three days prior to the five days that he'll work when he comes back in August, as with all the other guidance counselors.
It might be splitting hairs now, but I guess, because it's a two-year tenure as opposed to a normal three, I, I mean, as we all know, three-year tenure is a pretty short amount of time, so two-year tenure is even shorter. It just seemed like by starting someone in July versus September, when, when basically everybody is around to work with that person, and the community's around, we're even making that tenure two-year even shorter, we're actually shortening it by another two months. So it just seemed like a very short amount of time. So I guess the question I have in that case, I didn't realize about the chair, I had forgotten that point, but if, if it made sense to, or it might not be possible, to pay the perdiem before, and then actually start their tenure term at the beginning of the school year?
I mean, I guess I would just say, you know, we've brought this person in, we've gone through a serious recruitment process, I mean, he's an employee, he's one of our chairs, our chairs will be working this summer. I think as a chairperson, we're hiring him, we are hiring him as of July one, so I don't know from a technical.
Technically, we couldn't pay him his perdiem rate unless he was already hired as an employee.
Say it again?
Technically, we couldn't pay him a perdiem rate unless he was already hired as an employee.
Then it's a no point.
But if I can add, I think that this position obviously is, is a high-profile, high-knee position, and I think the board can trust that the high school administration, as well as the district administration, are going to closely monitor and support Michael and his success, and certainly are going to be mindful of the tenure timelines associated with his employment.
Sure, I mean, look, ideally, it takes, you know, five years to really get to know if someone's a really solid tenure candidate, and we don't have that luxury, so, okay, all right.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
Anything else? Okay, can I then get a motion to accept items under headings ten through sixteen?
Second.
All those in favor?
Wait, let me just.
Aye. All, sorry.
I just want to make sure I'm following, yes.
Gotcha.
Aye.
Got it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, it's five zero. And now I'd like to open, and please don't all rush at one time, but I'd like to open up the microphone to the community for any comments and or questions regarding the school district that throngs who have joined us tonight have.
It's summertime, you know.
Understood. Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have one quick comment. Time, I just wanted to ask, when you guys decide your committee appointments, that obviously not only will be posted on the website, could somehow be, you know, included in this weekend's school district or some such, so people kind of know where the board members are specializing. Because I, when I was actually looking to send my questions in on code conduct, and the safety plan, it wasn't on the website, who was, you know, on, you know, the relevant committees, so.
And we, and we will do so and then notify also the mayor for the village liaison, both the I E F and the P T S A for the various board liaisons to those groups.
Thank you.
It's good that they know who they're supposed to talk to.
I'll tell you a story.
But not now, I guess.
Yeah, I guess now?
I have a, I have a thing.
Yes, no doubt, so you, we're, we're, we're there. We're there to, please.
There was something I know that, I know that Maria and Phil have been liaising and working with food service people, and I know that has been a comment about how much, how many site visits and how much that would cost, and I just was wondering if time-wise, we should speak about it now, so that if we needed to move forward and make a decision, we would have had the conversation in public, because it's only due not till the end of August, so I'm kind of concerned about timing on that.
I guess the issue was, we were, we, there's, there's consideration by the administration to pay a consultant to monitor our food service, our compliance with our food service program that we've just read down, please, you're, you're much closer to this, if I, if I misstated, and that this was going to cost us about twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Nine thousand.
I'm sorry, nine thousand, that's why it's good. So nine thousand dollars, and that would be for how many site visits?
Ten, ten at nine hundred.
Okay, so, and so the comment was brought up by multiple board members as to whether, A, this is money well spent in light of our budget situation, and B, so I guess asking for the rationale of the administration as to why we're going this way, but then B, do we have the right people in-house effectively to do, to perform the same function, so we would not have to spend the nine thousand dollars? Is that a fair summation?
As a longer term, I mean, certainly, some, I think we all kind of agree, some initial number of site visits makes sense to train people, and, but I guess in the long term, it seems like we need to come up with a long-term solution to kind of monitor ourselves.
I guess that's an interesting point, I guess, one thing, when we, and Phil, please, we have, is there a way of using that money instead of doing ten visits, to have a couple visits and have somebody trained alongside, so, okay, sorry, so, please?
I mean, the idea is that Jim would work with a staff member to teach them how to monitor the food service provider, and that over time, two or three visits, that would be sufficient to get that person to speed, not to spend nine thousand dollars, we could spend some extra for that. And I actually think that's a good idea. I should say, I was the one who was initially a proponent for using Jim, but I think in light of the amount of money, I think it makes sense to come up with a more compact relationship with him, so that we don't spend that much money on it. And I guess the idea is also smart to teach a man to fish, and he eats for a lifetime, so to speak.
Does.
School food for a lifetime.
Right.
Do we, are, I'm just, I'm just wondering, was there thought put into, are we better served with having someone not an employee of the district do that, because they could, they might be more, I don't want to use the word honest, but more forthcoming about problems that they see, as opposed to someone that's an employee of the district?
That was my initial thought, yeah. But I kind of flipped on it.
Sorry, cut, by the way.
I decided that saving the money was probably.
At some point, you gotta assume that if someone's job is to report this, that they're gonna want to do their job, and if they're, you know.
Are we suggesting this is stipended type of thing?
No, I'm just going to.
I'd say we would.
Well, you say that someone's jobs, we'd basically be asking somebody to take on this role as part of their existing position, we're not suggesting a stipend or anything like that.
No, no, but I, no, but I was just saying, in terms of willing to be forthcoming, I mean, I think, you know, we don't have a luxury of always hiring out.
No, no, I don't.
It's kind of what I'm, but I'm sorry, don't I?
Go ahead, no, go ahead, John, you, you're not.
I just want to understand what, what it is they're monitoring. It's not, I originally thought, oh, we're having consultants, you know, they're gonna check, see, see how good the food is, because I thought that was one of, frankly, that was one of the concerns, I thought. But it's not, it's not food tasting.
No, Maria can explain, because, I mean, this is, in the past, Aramark has fallen out of compliance with, actually with our contract. So the person who is doing the monitoring has to know our contract intimately, since Jim Bigley, our consultant, helped us with the R F P and then ultimately the contract, thinking was that Jim is as knowledgeable as anyone, since he's the one who helped us with it, so that he would actually go through the contract with the district employee and sort of make clear what are the areas that are really the areas that tend to be the critical areas that fall out of compliance in terms of, I mean, availability of vegetables is a very obvious one, because it says that we're supposed to have fresh vegetables at each meal, and if there are no fresh vegetables because the truck didn't come in, or whatever excuse there is, then they serve canned vegetables or no vegetables, and that would be the kind of thing that we would want to make sure that our district employee was identifying and staying on top of, and that, the point is, I don't think we necessarily need Mr. Bigley come in ten times a year to check on the fresh vegetables, we can have a district employee do that, but to have him come in and just go through the contract and point out what are the absolute, what are the things that really need to be looked after, because the contract is, what, forty, fifty pages long, and, you know.
He could, he could presumably write a list, you know, check fresh vegetables.
Well, and, and, but it also goes beyond that also, there are certain rules and regulations that are, that we have to follow as well. You know, health violations.
You're right, John, he could spend nothing and just kind of assume that we'll do it well ourselves, but since we did do it ourselves in the past, I think, it stands to reason having a little bit of support from someone who is more knowledgeable, and it's his business, that that would help us do it better going forward.
Yeah, I, I definitely have an open mind about that. If, if this is something that, where somebody in the, first of all, it would seem to me you have to have a different person in each building do it, if you're going to, because I don't imagine. a different person in each building do it, if you're going to, because I don't imagine anybody in the district really goes around from, except maybe the superintendent, goes around from building to building.
I would say that, that, John, if I may, that I, I think that as we pursue this concept, and it seems there's interest among the board, I think our desire would want to be to have a, a person that's a district-level employee, whether it's someone in a support role or an administrative capacity, that would have that flexibility, because I think there's value in seeing the continuity of service from school to school, and to see that consistency that is, that is there.
Right.
Because I think that's a valuable observation that we would lose otherwise.
Yeah.
And so I, I think our desire in identifying the appropriate person would be someone that would have that flexibility to be able to visit each school and do so, whether it's all in one day, or to do it on a series of days, if they're looking for different patterns.
So when we're thinking about the cost of a consultant versus this, we, I think we have to keep in mind that if we're going to task somebody in the district to do it, there's an opportunity cost to that, right? We're taking away something else that we're paying them to do.
Because I have to tell you, when you really start thinking about who this person can be and would be, it's probably one of these two people sitting to my immediate right.
Not just several.
You know, if, if you're, if you're, because if we're ta, remember, we're tasking somebody with, okay, well, maybe, okay, so maybe three people in the district.
So here, this might be a crazy idea, but...
That would be a...
You can do it.
Crazy.
You can do it.
And you could totally shoot this around, but maybe, certainly at the high school, I'm wondering if there could be like a committee of students who might actually be interested in like food service as a career? That could actually work as a liaison to whoever is the person who appointed, because they're certainly capable of like checking certain things and following up.
Um, one of our goals associated with food services is that we're going to develop an ongoing food service committee, where there would be student participation and contribution.
I had that a few years ago, yeah, I don't know what happened to it.
And if, if it's, if it's things like food, you know, being, vegetables being fresh, that's something that could be extended beyond the high school, presumably. You can have younger kids, you know, having the job to check and see if the vegetables are fresh, they'd get excited about it.
And I think the board also should consider for the first year, I, I agree, maybe going forward past this year, but I think a little bit extra needs to be spent this year, also having our consultant train the in-house person.
Oh, absolutely, exactly.
So, you know, I know, you know, the nine thousand seems a little high for his visits, well, we could cut back the visits, but I also think he needs some training time with whoever you designate as the point person, because it's not just our contract. There are also rules and regulations in place, you know, from the state and health department level that also needs to be factored into this whole big picture.
Yeah.
So can I propose that, that we pursue looking at potentially five site visits, identifying an individual? Beverly, Raina and I can put our heads together to think about the appropriate personnel that could be involved in this process, then reach out to Mr. Bigley to see if we can revise that proposal to develop a training model whereby we could train the individual in a hands-on sense, where they're actually shadowing and working with Mr. Bigley and the staff, and develop what the appropriate protocols, the checklist concept of what to look for, and then maybe do that in a series of maybe two or three visits, and then have Mr. Bigley come back over the course of the year and maybe, you know, mid-year, end of the year as follow-up.
I wouldn't want to suggest how you'd focus that search for the internal person, but I understand Dr. Core knows her way around a kitchen person.
After all...
Just kidding, I'm just kidding.
Maybe I'll add that to my, I'll add that, I can do that too.
File it or do something like that.
Yeah.
Very good. Well done. So we, we will begin the investigative follow-up.
Anything else? Okay, our next meeting will be August twenty-seventh, two thousand thirteen. Everybody enjoy your, at six-thirty.
If that's okay with the board.
It's fine.
We're making it early.
Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
And actually, that's the last week of August, so you're not going to be here, and I'm not going to be here.
Oh, you're both on?
Oh.
Can we move the meeting now?
Why don't we talk about that? Because I, I don't know, are, are the three of you here that last week of August?
Uh, yeah.
I expect to be.
I just realized that...
It's called JV sports, we have to be back.
Okay. That's our, that's my one week of vacation.
Yeah, I've got a, yeah, I've got a kid back for cross-country.
So why don't, why don't we speak about that? We may need to revise that meeting.
Yeah.
We could have it without them, just saying.
We, I mean, the three of you can have the meeting.
We can, the two of us can have it.
The three of you, you know, purpose of mine.
But you're both away, and it's about a day.
So, yeah, we'll put on the agenda changing every policy.
Sure. I'll be at the beach.
We'll be happy to come in by video.
I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah.
I'll be dressed a little differently. Um, so I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of particular persons. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, and have a good summer.
Bye, bye.